Thanks. Thank you, everyone, for getting up so early. Appreciate it. Want to call the special work session agenda for the Planning Commission to order for September 6, 2016. Do we have... Let's see. Call the roll, I guess. Is there... Ms. Brooke?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Higginson.
Here.
Mr. Loth.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Here.
Mr. Jordan.
Here.
Vice Chair Fuzo.
Here.
Chair Campanella.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, preliminary matters. Is there any member of the public who wants to talk about an item? Not on today's agenda, that being the average unit density program. We have any speaker slips for public comment? Okay. Well, seeing none, let's get on to recommendation to City Council on the AUD. Ms. Brooke, would you guide us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I will ask a favor, since I am both a staff person and not a commissioner and secretary today. If members of the public could let other members know when they walk in the building... Just a minute. To fill out any speaker slips and bring them to me during my presentation. That'll help, then, just to make sure I get everyone who wants to address the question. Thank you. Okay, well, thank you, commissioners, for being able to meet on this early Tuesday morning after holiday. Sorry. Why do I have to watch this? Okay.
First meeting. And then I also want to feed that into the Adaptive Management Program report, which staff will be preparing in the next month. All of this is to hopefully lead to some recommendations to City Council. We will, at the end of October, October 27, we will be having our semi-annual joint meeting of the City Council and Planning Commission. And we expect that the average unit size density incentive program will be the heart of that conversation as we present our Adaptive Management Program report. So the agenda for today's meeting is, once I'm done with the presentation, we would take initial Planning Commission questions, then public comment, and then really get into the Planning Commission discussion with the goal of adjourned the meeting by 11 o'clock. So as I mentioned, the Adaptive Management Program is one of the primary focuses of carrying out the general plan. It provides us an opportunity to make policy adjustments if we find that policies or implementation actions of the general plan are not being carried out in the way that we had hoped or that we couldn't foresee. So, again, this discussion on the AUD program is very timely and very purposeful in terms of carrying out the Adaptive Management Program. And as I mentioned, that will be the heart of our discussion on October 27. So I wanted to briefly review, again, the program objectives for AUD program. It comes out of our general plan land use element to encourage smaller rental and workforce units close to transit and near commercial services and recreational opportunities. And it's, again, mentioned in another component of the plan to encourage smaller, more affordable units through established unit sizes, realizing that some units may be larger and some may be smaller, but on average, again, the name of the program, on average, they would be smaller than units we had seen prior to 2013. And then the statement of purpose, it's found in the zoning ordinance, which is where all the development standards of the AUD program are laid out. It, again, says that we want to facilitate the construction of smaller housing units by allowing increased density and development standards incentives in selected areas of the city, and that they provide housing opportunities for the city's workforce. So I wanted to just remind everyone where these selected areas of the city are. This is our AUD program map. And it does, and I won't spend a lot of time on it, but just wanted to refresh your memory. The different... As the colors get a darker color, those are the areas of higher density, the light orange or yellow compared to the red. And then this hatched mark is the priority housing overlay. And that's where the most or the highest density levels are allowed and encouraged. So, again, the heart of downtown, excluding some areas of El Pueblo Viejo, the Haley Gutierrez corridor, Milpus corridor, and then Upper State Street around La Cumbra and Hope. So I also wanted to briefly review the development incentives that are actually available under the AUD program, because I think it can be confusing to know exactly what incentives were provided through the program. So the next few slides will compare the development standards we had in place prior to July 2013, and then what we have now after 2013 or after AUD. So first is the maximum allowed density. And I laid these out here so you can see that in most parts of town or most zone areas, land use designations, the densities did not change. I highlight in each of these slides in yellow where there was a change made with AUD. So medium-high densities, the R3, R4 areas, still remain the same, 15 to 27 dwelling units per acre. Same with the commercial and light industrial areas, if they had that medium-high residential density as a component allowed. High-density areas of town still allow the same density under AUD. The one exception, of course, is the priority housing overlay, that area on the map I pointed out earlier that has the crosshatching. That's where we have the highest density allowed. And some of that overlay does overlay onto R3, R4 zones. So that's where you do see what might be otherwise zoned medium-high density can be allowed to go up to this higher tier if they are proposing rental housing, employer-sponsored housing, or limited equity co-op. Those are the only types of projects that are allowed to develop at this density. Maximum building height, also, just want to quickly touch on the change there. The only change we saw there were in the commercial zones, light manufacturing and M1 zones. Same height limit and same amount of stories allowed in R3, R4 in some of our limited commercial and specialized office zones. It was in C2, CM, and M1 that, at the same time that we adopted the AUD ordinance, we amended our building height limitations in these zones. What used to be allowed was 60 feet and four stories. What's now allowed is 45 feet and four stories. You could only go above 45 feet if the project is designated a community benefit project and you get special Planning Commission findings. Parking, a major topic of concern with the AUD program. What I wanted to highlight here is there were some significant changes. As many of you are probably aware, AUD requires only one space per unit regardless of where the project's developed. And so that's consistent all the way down the right side of this column. What we had in place before AUD was a mix of a couple things. Multi-unit residential development regardless of where it was developed, allocated parking spaces based on the number of bedrooms. So we had these parking requirements for a long time. Number of bedrooms, and then guest parking if you had more than six or more units. That's the same, or was the same, in a mixed-use development regardless of where it was proposed. If the residential use exceeded 50% of the development, you had to park those residential units in the same way as you would in just a straight multifamily development. Where it got a little more relaxed was if the residential use is no more than 50% of the development, these parking ratios were cut in half. So the reason that I sort of lightly shaded this over here after AUD is that although, right now, one space per unit is required, you could have had a situation in the past where, if these were cut in half, you could have also had even less than one space per unit if you were doing a mixed-use development and residential represented less than half of the development. And then nothing changed in the central business district. It was always one space per unit and no guest parking required. That's the same with the AUD. Outdoor living space, also a topic of concern. We've heard from the public and design boards and the Planning Commission, so I want to just quickly go over this. Outdoor living space in the R3, R4 zones did not change with the AUD program. It did, however, change for projects developing in commercial zones. And I'm excluding SD2 overlay because it has a very unique nuance to this, where the prior open space requirements are required. Though we haven't had that occur yet. So I'll focus on straight commercial zones. We have two ways that projects can comply with outdoor living space for multifamily developments. One is method A, and we have method B. So developers can choose to provide it in either way. And prior to AUD, if they were doing method A, they had to provide 10% of the total lot areas open space. They had to provide at least one 15-foot-by-15-foot common area. And they had to provide private outdoor living space for each unit. Or they could have opted to just provide 15% of the lot area with one area having minimum 20-foot-by-20-foot minimum dimensions. So with AUD, open space was relaxed a bit, and there were more options provided to applicants. If they wanted to provide it in the method A format, these two bottoms stayed the same, but the 10% of lot area was allowed to be optional. They didn't have to provide that. They still have to provide a 15-by-15 common area and private outdoor living space for each unit. Or if they were doing method B, they still had to provide 15% of the lot area with the 20-foot dimension, but it could be on any floor. Prior to that, it had to be on the ground floor. So that, we are seeing a lot of developments with that, going with that option. Okay. So at the heart of the... Objective of the AUD program is to encourage smaller rental units, locate them close to transit and services, and to encourage workforce housing. So I want to touch just a bit on this term workforce housing. This was mentioned at the last Planning Commission meeting. It's typically referred to those households that are overqualified for subsidized housing, but they can't afford to purchase a home in the average market of Santa Barbara. And if we talk about that in terms of area median income, it's roughly in that range of 120... It's households making 120 to 200% of the area median income. And in Santa Barbara, that is just over $77,000. So that we can be talking in the same terms, I wanted to show you what a household that's making 120 to 160% or 160 to 200% of area median income, what that would translate to in terms of an affordable rent. So we do this by household, number of persons in a household. So here I have one-through-four-person household, and then the two different income brackets that make up that workforce housing. And it's typically understood through county or state and federal departments that it's advisable that 30% of your gross monthly income go towards rent. But we do know in Santa Barbara that about half of the population pay more than that. But for this purpose, I've calculated what 30% growth monthly rent would be. And so one could expect that of these household sizes, these rent levels would be affordable to the workforce of our city. So one of the questions we've been asked is, will these units actually serve as workforce housing? And we don't yet have objective data about that. We have one project that is further along than most others. That's the mark on Upper State Street. And they have advertised their rental start rates on their website, so we'll use that for comparison. They do say they would start at these rent levels, so I'll disclose that. That for one-person household, and again, here's the affordable monthly rent for workforce, this is how their rents would compare to those. So it is on the upper end of what would be within the affordable monthly rent for a workforce household. But not out of the question, and also recognizing these are new units. We haven't seen new rental units in this quantity in the city for 40 years. So one would expect to pay a bit more for new housing product. So now I want to really get into the continuation of the Planning Commission's meeting from July 21. At the end of that meeting or throughout the meeting, we were polling or taking a poll of commissioners about the questions we asked at that time. One is the AUD program meeting, its objectives. The majority of the commissioners said yes, but of course, with some possible adjustments, there could be room for improvement. Also, the Planning Commission, a majority of them, recommended amendments related to parking. Also, that we improve the review process for HLC and ABR, as they are the primary bodies reviewing and approving these projects. And that you encourage multi-unit or mixed-use guidelines, excuse me, to help in the review of these projects. So other... The next few slides will go through other comments that we heard from the Planning Commissioners that day. And so please feel free, at the end, if I've missed something, to let me know. That you felt you needed more information about some of these things. And I have a little bit more information on two of them, but more that I can continue to gather this data over the next month and be able to put it into the AMP report. You need more information about the pace of development, car ownership statistics in the city, detailed statistics of these AUD projects, fees and improvements, and that was public improvements, a question about what types of fees and public improvements are required for these projects. Also, what were the nature of projects being proposed prior to the AUD program? And then overall, understanding of the project review process. And so staff will be following up on all of those bullet points while we prepare our Adaptive Management Program report. I may not have all of that today, but we are working on that. So in terms of pace of development, I wanted to just touch on that, put it in context of our housing element that was adopted in 2015. It's an element that carries out over eight years, guides the development of housing in the city. So from 2015 to 2023, it's anticipated that we would add 1,208 units to the city of Santa Barbara. In 2014, we had just over 38,000. So that by 2023, we had anticipated having 39,601 units in the city. And that was based on a 20-year historical average of adding about 150 units to the city each year. And of course, that recognizes many ups and downs over those years. But again, that's just an average of 151 a year. So I wanted to touch here on a couple benchmarks we have in the city. So this is total housing units in the city over time, going from 2008 and projecting out to 2030. So here we are, as of January 2016. We had 38,488 units in the city. As I mentioned, the housing element in 2023 anticipates 39,601 units. So that would put us here. And what I've done here, I should go back and explain. So this shows actual number of housing units in the city at each two-year mark. In order for us to not exceed what we expected and analyzed as part of the general plan EIR, which was a total of about 40,470 units by 2030, I backed out from that, on average, about how many units we could add to the city and not exceed that by 2030. And it's about 280 units every two years. And again, that's an average. That's an understanding that some years may be more and some may be less. So what these red bars do is add 280 units every two years. It puts us about on track for our housing element numbers by 2023 and not to exceed what we had analyzed as part of the general plan EIR. And I will note that so far in 2016, so this is our starting number on January 1, we've only added 18 new units in 2016. So we're way below the average we might expect of 140 each year. But again, obviously, we have a surge of pending and approved applications, and I recognize that. So here's statistics, latest statistics of the AUD projects proposed as of August 31. A total of 959 projects using the AUD program, broken out by the different categories. These two numbers are in red because the high-density and priority housing overlay units are the two that count towards that 250-unit test or eight-year trial period for the program, when the program would otherwise revert back to variable density. So these are the units that we're really paying attention to and tracking to see at what point we might need to make adjustments if we are getting way above 250 certificates of occupancy expected in the near future. So again, going back to the Planning Commission's comments of July 21, what we heard from you in terms of project review process, improvements we could have there is to increase support to the HLC and ABR in the form of staff reports, site visits, and additional staff analysis of those projects. We have been working with the Subcommittee of the HLC, and we do anticipate working with members of the ABR as well to also continue working on ways that we can support them better. You also asked for additional consideration for historic resources and that the staff prepare multi-unit or mixed-use design guidelines. And as I go through these slides at the very end of my presentation, I will set up for the Commission some proposed motions or recommendations based on these very categories. If it helps guide your discussion, I'll block them like this, project review process. And then the next category will be potential ordinance amendments that Planning Commission had previously discussed. Some of you asked for some type of a relief valve in the ordinance to allow for Planning Commission action in some cases, rather than just Planning Commission comments on some of those larger projects. There were suggestions to limit the number of bedrooms and bathrooms in the units, to require laundry rooms, to review, again, the height limits, additional protection for historic resources, and a mechanism to control rent rates. You also asked for some adjustments to open space requirements that we discuss the trial period of eight years of 250 units. And then various suggestions about parking ordinance amendments, possibly increasing the number of parking spaces for three or more bedrooms, require car sharing, transit improvements, prohibiting garages, allowing carports only. Mr. Chair, did you have...
Yes, I have a question. The comments that are down here is, these are individual commissioners, correct?
Understood, yes.
Okay.
They are.
So our goal today would be actually to... I think our goal should be to get motions and votes.
Yes.
To see which items we agree on.
Correct.
That should be forwarded.
That's correct.
Right now, we're just looking at a menu.
Yes.
Of suggestions by individual commissioners.
Right. I wanted to just remind the Commission of the ideas and suggestions that were put out there in July. But you're correct, at the end of this, we would like to get a motion and votes on these so that we could have a majority recommendation to council on certain topics.
Thank you.
Other suggestions that may not necessarily be an ordinance amendment, but could just be other areas that staff may need to look into related to parking is unbundling parking for projects, allowing parking off-hours in public lots, requiring on-street parking survey as part of the project review. And then some of your comments related to the Adaptive Management Program is to evaluate impacts in commercial zones versus residential zones, to monitor the water use of these projects, evaluate the annual survey data that is required of these projects, should they supply that to us. There are eight or nine questions that we would be asking project applicants after the units are constructed to give us some information about rents charged and the types of households in these units. And then also to monitor on-ground conditions before and after the project. So as I mentioned before, we have begun working with the Subcommittee of the HLC. We've met three times so far. And we do anticipate bringing onboard a couple of ABR members as well. So far, we have been focusing on... Well, we started off with a broad range of topics. But right now, after presenting the initial findings of the Subcommittee to the HLC, the full HLC made recommendations to both the Subcommittee and to council that we augment project submittal requirements as part of our submittal requirements for applicants for these projects, that we ask them for more information, ask them for more of a design intent statement, have them do some of this initial analysis to help make the case for why their project meets the intent of the AUD program. Again, that we increase staff support to the design boards. And then the Subcommittee was directed by the full commission to work on developing what we've been calling infill guidelines. We had been calling them multi-unit mixed-use design guidelines. I think to be more accurate, they're really infill guidelines, less so maybe about design in terms of architectural style or wouldn't want to copycat what's already in EPV. But really, the things we're talking about are the livability and the openness and the light and air of these projects as they are primarily infill on purpose. And that the HLC directed the Subcommittee to suggest revisions to the AUD program map as there were concerns raised about the proximity of the priority housing overlay to some existing historic resources. Okay, and then the trial period sunset. This was mentioned previously. Currently, we don't have any projects that are subject to that trial period that have received certificate of occupancy. Based on the pacing of development, we could expect to get to that 250th CFO in the next two to two-and-a-half years. There's about four to five projects right now that if they continue at the pace they had been through the discretionary process, they could be occupied in that time period. So again, we'd recommend the Planning Commission discuss that because if that trial period's not amended, we would revert back to variable density at the end of this. And I think it's pretty well agreed upon that we don't want to do that. So again, as I said, I would go through recommendations that the Planning Commission take these topics as groupings with these four topics in mind. Project review process, ordinance amendments, other recommendations that didn't really fit into either of those two categories, and then recommendations to council and staff on the Adaptive Management Program report. So these following slides will pretty much mirror what I just went through. But at the end, I would ask for, at the end of each of these topics, to get a motion from the Planning Commission. So I'll just quickly show you what I'm expecting or asking. Again, project review process. Possible ordinance amendments, these are just the ones that were mentioned before. Could we get a motion from the Planning Commission on some of these, these other recommendations? And then the Adaptive Management Program report. And then that concludes my presentation. And I would turn it back to the Commission for any questions.
Okay, thank you. We are on a tight schedule today. I think in order to... I'll just make an estimate here. We're scheduled till 11 o'clock, is that correct? Okay, I would think the latest 10 o'clock, we want to get into motions. Okay? Because I think we have a number of them to do. We want to have discussion on the motions before taking votes, of course. So I'm trying to schedule between now and we have 40 minutes.
Thirteen.
We have 13. Okay. Okay. So we have 13 speaker slips. We can go to questions, we can hear the speakers first, and then go to questions to be consistent with rolling into what the motions would be. And I think, if I don't have any objections, maybe we can go to speakers first. Because the combination of questions, pseudo-discussion, and motions are going to be pretty wound up together, I think, in order to get out of here. But that's most efficient. The other thing I would like to request... The other thing I would like to request, if we can, I don't have a clock in front of me, so I'm using my iPhone, which may or may not be accurate. Hold on one second. Okay, what was that number? How many did you count? 13, 26, you'd get us like 10 minutes for questions. No, okay. I apologize, but I'm going to request that a speaker stays to one minute. Can you make your point, make it effectively? Otherwise, we'd be here almost to 10 o'clock, and we'd have no time for questions prior to it. So if you could be succinct, I would appreciate it. Is it okay, Ms. Brooke? Yeah, because we really are on a tight schedule. If someone would like to give their time to another member, they can have their minute as well. But if you can summarize and maybe speak to whatever points you would like, but also to the point that we're trying to discuss and decide today, that would be appreciated. Okay, our first speaker is Lindsay Baker, and she will be followed by Brian Cornell.
Fortunately, we have copies of our letter today, so it'll be longer than one minute. Good morning, Commissioners and Chair. I'm Lindsay Baker, co-president for the League of Women Voters, Santa Barbara. Since 2009, the League of Women Voters of Santa Barbara has been opposing any large increase in residential density in the downtown area because we felt it would never be affordable. Your own feasibility study done then predicted that huge buildings at 62 units per acre could produce 56 small units costing $800,000 to $1 million when sold. Clearly, rentals would be similarly expensive. The cost of housing is so affected by the number of bathrooms and kitchens needed that smaller units actually increase building costs dramatically. The League does support your experiment to see if more affordable housing could be built with smaller units, but we foresee that you would allow, would allow an open process to apply for larger densities. You need to analyze the full results of your first 250 units carefully to see if you're creating any workforce housing as originally proposed. We are now, for the first time, experiencing a very serious drought with no end in sight. Lack of water may have to serve as the break of any new residential growth. A moratorium on issuing new water meters should be seriously considered, as well as mitigation fees should be continued to study. Any way to pace new development would have to be studied because the city's water shortage and traffic problems would never be able to cope with 1,000 more expensive residential units being built here now. The city of Santa Barbara has always planned thoughtfully in the past in order to live within our natural resources, and that is more important than ever today. Thank you.
Thank you. I gave you the extra minute.
I built it, thank you.
Okay. I know you represent a large group, so I didn't do that.
Do I get one too?
You'll get one minute unless you can convince me to go to it.
Okay. We have not seen apartments built in Santa Barbara in 45, 50 years. I was in high school. And so this housing, I know it's a long time, this housing matters. And we need to realize that even though we've got, right out of the box, expensive units being advertised, which is, which is, I think, important to evaluate, this housing does make a difference down the line. The more units we can create, even if they're at the upper end, we're going to free up units at the lower end. It's just the way it will work. So we've got to keep this going. I would suggest that we do need to tweak it. The rent costs and the parking issues are very real issues. I personally believe that we need to reduce the size of the units further. I think if we're going to give one parking space to a unit, it needs to be a small unit. Those are the units that this community needs. People, you know, the vast majority of younger people in Santa Barbara would love to live alone in their own place, and small units, one-bedroom studio units with one parking space work. So I encourage you, go ahead and look at that. We need to tweak things, it's important. As far as rent, understand that there's the cost of land, there's the cost of the process, there's the cost of construction. We're not going to build super affordable units, that is the job of the Housing Authority, but maybe there is a way to ensure certain, you know, there's a limit, or there's certain units within these projects maybe rise to some, you know, point of, dare I say, rent control. I think it should be looked at because we've got to make sure we're providing affordable units. I think the way to do it is smaller, more smaller units. Finally, discretionary process, we have a robust discretionary process in Santa Barbara that's been nurtured over a long period of time, we've got to trust that. The reality is, in some places, a denser AUD project is going to work, in other places, it just won't. And yes, we need to give the tools to the discretionary process to be able to manage that on a case-by-case, neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis.
Thank you. Yeah, it was over two. We're never, the thing is, we need to, we're on a tight schedule. Normally, we'd ask questions of people, I don't want to cut it off. If you have questions later for the audience, when we're making comments, we will, but otherwise, we're not going to have time to make motions. Thank you. Anthony Grumbeen, you followed by Judy Ries. Authentic two minutes.
Okay. And, yeah, okay, so I'll try to be as brief as possible. So Bill Mahan was going to be trying to be here as well, but so from the HLC, I'm the new kid on the block, but Commissioner Ries, Mahan, as well as one or two others have been part of this process. Some of the points that we really wanted to hit home that we've found through the process that, yes, we actually do have some of the teeth, and by requiring applicants to come forward with already showing the livability and workability, we might be able to get better design within it. So we have some of those recommendations. But one of the, one of the other pieces that we wanted to kind of bring to light was, aside from other points being made, whether it's actually working or not, but one of the key ones was open space. One of the things we found when we looked at, and I'll just show you really fast. This is a 3D scan, a LiDAR scan of the city. In looking at this, and this is one of the things that we were going to be asking for context requirement of 3D, but you can actually, this is a sort of a plan view of it. When you look at the density of State Street here, here's Casa de la Guerra for reference, when you look at the density of this, of the historic El Pueblo Viejo, and you compare how the infill will be, you can see projects like Chapala 1 here and along Chapala Street, and you can feel the sort of compactness of these, the new blocks that we're doing. And it's not just AUD, but it's just the density in general. And one of the things in looking at these was, if we look at the historic paseos, and we look at the way historic blocks are done, it actually has a lot of the answers for what makes Santa Barbara beautiful, has, and what we would encourage. And there's one other main point that ties to this is, yes, this is the historic El Pueblo Viejo district, which is officially our purview, but the reality is, most of Santa Barbara on the grid is historic. And, and there's, you know, two-thirds of our historic properties are throughout, or actually, over 50%, but throughout the city. And the, it's for the historic nature, but it's also actually for the historic character of the city, and that's part of what really makes Santa Barbara so beautiful is the urban plan that has been developed on it. So anyways, those were all big considerations for us, and, and other things like parking, it was, we were very concerned with the livability of all the, of not having enough parking and not having walking distances to all these, all these pieces and, and things. So sorry, this is kind of fast and smashed together, but that's our, some of our key concerns from the HLC, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for putting those together. Appreciate that. Okay, Christine Newhauser, be followed by Britta Bartels. Okay. Sorry. Okay, that's Britta. Who just raised their hand, please?
I did.
Name, please. Okay. Everyone had filled out a speaker slip? Okay. All right, I need some names. Thank you. Your name, sir?
Avana Gott. Hi, that's me.
Okay.
So the first thing I would like to do is hand out something for everyone to look at.
Yeah, you have a total of, there were three people gave you the time. I'm trying to keep track.
Yes, and I'm also representing the Allied Neighborhood Association. So if I can have extra time, that would be great.
Okay, well, let's try four minutes.
Okay. First, I'd like to start by asking the Commissioners just to think about these particular questions as I ask a few others, which is, how critical is it that you receive accurate, honest, and timely information about how the AUD incentive program is working? How important is it that the AUD program is understood by staff at all levels for it to be implemented correctly and for oversight? And would you prefer that bad news come from staff or the public? Okay, so I have a few more questions for staff, which is AUD rentals. So the AUD rental that you, excuse me, the vacation rental that I had a flyer put out, that is one of the first two AUD rentals that received occupancy in April. In May, it was turned in as a short-term vacation rentals, not just the commercial units, but the residential units. It's also a venue. So when did we find out about this? Okay, so, okay, when did we, so you guys can, okay, and so the next one is, is that is there a scenario in which AUD rentals, units, can be permitted as vacation rentals? And many AUD products, projects do not take advantage of the available bonus densities, therefore, they don't have the conditions for AUD to keep those rentals as rental housing for the life of the, the project. Was that intended? And was that expected to have so many of them actually be able to have the incentives, but then have so few of them actually remain for long-term rental housing? And I'd also like to point out some few things that I found that was really disturbing, which is, we have AUD rental, excuse me, AUD projects that have their building permits, and my understanding is, is that they don't have a covenant requiring the rentals to actually be long-term rentals, you know, before the building permit was issued. You know, could possibly, you know, there be any owner that would come back and say that they don't want to provide rental housing because we've issued permits, we've gone through the entire process, but we haven't required them to actually sign a covenant stating that those rental, those rental units will remain rental units? Could that be an issue? I don't know. I would try to get out of it if I could, if I was just looking for money. That is happening at 604 East Cota and then 711 North Milbus. We can't find anything of any document, of any minutes, of any meeting that says that these rental units are going to remain rental units. It's approved. It doesn't have its building permit yet, but it's approved. I'd also like to know if the Commission has actually seen the language for the covenant and what they think of it? And how could it actually be, how could a developer-owner come into the city and request changes to their development and then change the density, which then does not make them, or does not require them to actually have the rental units as required rentals for their life of the project? Can they change that density? Can they change it, change it to condominiums? Can they take 89 units and make it into 60 units, or make it into 50 units of housing, and not be required to keep all units as rental housing? And then finally, the survey, excuse me, not finally, survey questions. Your survey questions continue to change. When survey questions change, the other people who have already, have already agreed to the survey questions are not asking the same questions. So you are not going to have a cohesive, you don't have a cohesive plan to actually get the questions, you don't have a cohesive plan to develop the questions, you're not getting the correct answers. And one question that you should be asking is, are the people who are living in the units students? Are they foreign exchange students?
I'm going to have to give you 10 more seconds, you're almost at five minutes.
Okay. Basically, the implementation of the AUD problem has systemic failures. It's throughout the process that we can find, this needs to really go back to the drawing board because the only thing that is happening right now is that it's setting, it's being set up for failure.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I'd like to give you this, these two things.
Okay, next speaker will be Lisa Plowman, followed by Natalia Ovini.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. I'm Lisa Plowman, I'm with Coastal Housing Coalition, I'm on their Board of Directors. And this morning, I just wanted to add to my, or public testimony that I made at our last hearing and sort of reinforce what I had said, but the AUD is actually producing the units that we so desired and so need in our community. We are now in a position where the median home price on the South Coast is back up to $1 million, which is where we were in 2005. So there is a significant demand and need for it. I'm of the view that we need to let the program work. It's successful, it's actually achieving what we wanted, but also obtaining the data and understanding it, and if there are tweaks that need to be made, then we should do that. But we need the data to be able to do that. Right now, we're just talking about anxiety and fear, and we don't have any fact to really back that up. The new units, as Brian Cornell mentioned, will actually help free up the market. Traditionally, in this community, when we've had a vacancy rate of about 5%, and we've been lower than that in the last few years, but we're starting to creep up, the rents have met moderate standards as set by the state. So the more units we have on the ground, the more moderate the rents will be. I agree. Oh. Just let me finish, two more points. I agree with supporting the HLC and the ABR as much as possible through staff support. I agree with the adaptive management, and I'm in support of car sharing. Rather than adding more parking to projects, I think car sharing is the way we should go. And that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Naomi Green, you will have two minutes. Thank you. Next speaker will be Miki Flax.
Well, hello. I would urge you to go back to the drawing board, not only on the AUD, but even on Plan Santa Barbara. And my, there are many, many objections and many problems with both, but I have just two overarching remarks to make. One is that I know you have to balance the good of the city and of enough housing with the needs of a neighborhood, but I come from the east side where we have, as you know, a lot of, a lot of the AUD projects. And I, and I've gone to a lot of meetings regarding this issue, and I have never seen, I know in theory, you say, you balance the neighborhood and you balance the greater good, but I haven't seen any evidence really of the neighborhood needs being factored into it. I've heard about cornices, I've heard about, about density, but, but nothing that tells me why you would put these things, put these buildings in a neighborhood which is overcongested, which has no part which has no parking lots, which has no parking structures. In other words, the side, and I, I just don't see at what point the needs of the neighborhood are coming into the discussion or into the conversation. And I think that really has to be. And, um, my second thing is, I, I was thinking, you know, about kinds of cities or areas and cities where you like to walk, not ride through, but walk, as Milpiss is a, is a walking, is a walking street, as well as a, as a corridor for cars. And I think when you, when you think about cities that you like or areas, you think about scale, you think about harmony, you think about places to sit down, you think about trees, you think about benches, and I think that Milpiss could be, could be a really interesting area of the city with, with planning, taking all this into account, transit, really good transit, say a shuttle or a jitney, as other areas or other cities have.
Ten seconds, please.
Okay. So, those are my two overarching things. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning. I've never spoken for a minute.
Fifty seconds, Nick.
I want to speak for tenants who are woefully underrepresented in this and every other PC hearing, partly because PC hearings are held in the daytime, and the tenants we're talking about are at work. So, I want to join my good friend Brian Cornell, former Chair of the Santa Barbara Chamber of Commerce, in calling for some kind of rent stabilization or rent control. What I am saying is that the rent that is to be charged in any proposed project should be part of the approval process, that you guys, before you're asked to vote on whether to approve it, should know more or less what the rent is going to be, and that we not judge the rents, affordable rents, by the tippy-tippy top of the AMI, the hundred sixty, two-hundred percent of the AMI. Most people who we're targeting are not at that level. And it's a little faraway comment by staff to say, well, more than half of the people in Santa Barbara are paying more than thirty percent of their income. The federal government calls that cost burdened. It is a burden that I think it is the responsibility of this community and its leaders to deal with, and that the AUD was intended to do that. If it needs some tweaking, like I agreed, no, no rent, no vacation rentals, no subletting, things like that are not in the ordinance and should be, but, and some sort of rent stabilization to make sure that the AUD is doing what we want it to.
Thank you. Okay, Ellen Bilstein, excuse me, be followed by Christine Newhazard. Oh, I'm sorry, you had given that time up, right? Hold on, no. No, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Yeah, Ellen Bilstein.
She's gone.
She left. Okay. See, we had, if I have these in order now, Brian, Lindsay, you just gave it time. Sorry, folks. Naomi Green spoke. Mickey, I, did I miss anyone with a speaker slip? Everyone spoke? Okay. Thank you. Okay, let's see, does, Ms. Brooke, do you have any comments that you want to make to some of the comments that the speakers made?
Mr. Chair, if you would like me to answer a few of those questions that were posed, I can do that.
Thank you.
Let's see. Okay, I think the, the bulk of the questions were from Ms. Gott about these AUD projects and the potential for them to be converted to vacation rentals and the recorded conditions required. So, she did actually hand out to you a copy of the recorded CCNRs as an example of what was recorded for the project at thirty-eight eighty-five State Street, so I can speak directly to that. So, these CCNRs are required, and it's stated in the ordinance and the municipal code that for any projects, in order, I'll just read it. "In order to qualify for the priority housing overlay density incentives allowed under the AUD, the owner of real property developed with rental housing must record a written covenant in a form acceptable to the city attorney by which the owner agrees to maintain the rental housing use for as long as the property is developed and maintained at the incentive densities provided for in this chapter." So, what that says in essence is that any of these projects that are utilizing that highest-density tier in the priority housing overlay need to record a CCNR document like this that says, as it does at the top of page two, that the approved eighty-nine residential units shall be maintained as residential rental housing use for as long as the property is developed and maintained at the incentive densities provided for in the AUD. So, that is required of every project that's developing in that area. This is probably the only one that we've seen recorded and available to the public because it's the only one that's actually under construction. It's typical for us to ask for this from a developer when they've submitted plans for building permit, plan check. It's usually one of our automatic corrections we give back to them that says, you have this condition, you need to provide this recorded document before we'll issue you the permit. So, we won't ask that. That's why we don't see it for seven eleven North Milpiss yet. We wouldn't ask someone to record something on their title until we know they're actually going through with the development. So, there's just a lag in when those actually come in or recorded. Specifically about the project just a block from us, five twenty-two Garden Street, that was one of the first projects approved and occupied as an AUD program project. It is in the medium-high-density area. There's two residential units and two commercial suites on the ground floor. We do know that they are operating, I believe all of them, as vacation rentals, and we knew about that in May. We, however, did not follow up automatically with enforcement because it was through our priority of how we were enforcing vacation rentals. We were going after those operating in single-family zones first, and any of those that we received a nuisance complaint about. So, we did know about it, but it wasn't one of those top tiers that we told council we would go after first. But we do, um, now we will also make part of our top-tier enforcement any project that was approved under the AUD program that's operating as a vacation rental. We can easily add that, and we have already followed up with that in this case. However, that applicant was also actively working with us to try to legalize those vacation rental units. So, we knew they were trying to go through the process, so we were holding off on active enforcement, but we will, we will do that now. We will ask them to cease that operation while they work through trying to legalize them. And then the question about, could they change to condos? So, as I read you the language in the code that requires any project that's developed at this highest priority housing tier of density, they're required to remain rental, that would not prevent somebody from combining units or somehow reducing the number of overall units if they could manage to stay within the AUD density tier to get them out of priority housing overlay and then want to seek conversion to condominiums? If they were able to drop down to a lower-density tier, they would be treated as any other project developed prior to AUD. They could have come forward in the high-density or medium-high-density and asked to convert to condos. We were seeing that quite often, actually, in the mid-two thousands. We would have projects come in, get almost all the way through the discretionary process, and then want to convert to condos. So, it would just, it would be that same process. There would be, there's many standards they have to meet to convert to condos. It's not just a sheer numbers game, but it, it, if they could get themselves down below the density tier, it could be a possibility.
Questions for Ms. Brooke on, on these items?
Yes. On that last one, on the language, the property, as long as the property is developed and maintained at the incentive densities provided for in the AUD incentive program, why was that included in the ordinance? The, the whole, at least for me, and I think for most of the planning commissioners, the idea was that, that it looked as if builders could develop rental housing that could be more or less, quote, "affordable," unquote, and at higher densities, and that it would be kept in perpetuity as rental housing. I mean, that was, that was, the incentive was higher density. What the city was getting was rental housing in perpetuity. And I can remember asking the city attorney, can we really write it so that that is guaranteed? That's assured. It's sort of considered to be about seventy-five years. Why was this provision included, which allows them to get out of it?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Lodge, I don't read that this allows them to get out of it. My reading of, you're looking at the covenant for thirty-eight eighty-five follows the ordinance language in that it shall be maintained as residential rental housing.
As long as it is maintained.
At the densities.
At that density.
At the densities provided, right.
And as you just said, you know, they could combine a bunch of studios.
Right.
One-bedrooms, end up with nice, large units, and get down below the, what, forty-nine to sixty-three density in the high priority.
Right. So, in speaking, this project, I believe, at Upper State Street was developed at sixty-three dwelling units per acre. They would have to get down to thirty-six dwelling units per acre by some form or fashion before they would be considered no longer developed at the incentive densities provided for in the AUD.
Have to get down to medium-high.
Uh, or high.
Or high, or high, right.
Right. So, cut their density in half. But you are correct, and that, the only, there are only three types of projects that can develop at the higher densities, as I mentioned, rental housing, employer-sponsored or co-op. So, it was very much intentional that only rental housing should be allowed those higher densities because that's what we wanted to incentivize. So, that is why we require they remain rental housing so long. Is there anything from forty-nine to sixty-three dwelling units per acre?
Okay, well, I'm, I'm still concerned because I've heard, there's one, one developer in town has bought a property which he's going to build at, you know, it's in the commercial zone, in the priority overlay, and he's going to build it according to the high priority, the priority overlay requirements, but is intending to hold it only long enough so that he could then do this and get down below those densities. And so, and I'm just wondering, and that's what he's told, he, it's what he told the person he bought it from. So, I, I, this looks like a huge loophole to me. I, I, it wouldn't be easy to do if they have to get it down to thirty-six, but still, I think it's a huge loophole, and I would like to see that looked at and possibly changed. Thank you. Oh, and there was a question about six oh four East Cota, and how come there is no, it's under construction, but there don't, doesn't appear to be a, a CCNRs for it.
Correct. They have a permit to grade. I don't believe we've issued the permit yet to actually construct. Mr. Cornell might, no, but that is one that would require that covenant. It is high priority. And your other comment about concern to potential condo conversion, we can address that in the AMP report if you would like us to.
Well, I would certainly like to, yeah.
As a potential concern, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'll go down the table now if I can. Thanks. Commissioner Higgins?
Just a question to Ms. Brooke. The scenario that Commissioner Lodge was discussing, and I think you, you, you mentioned it in, in your discussion about how if, if apartment project were to come back for a condo conversion, it would have to meet a certain set of standards, right? So, excuse me, somehow the units would have to be collapsed or combined, and maybe the, you know, additional parking would be easier to come by at that point, but they, they would nonetheless have to satisfy parking, which could or could not be done perhaps with the project you, that we're talking about very easily. But what are some other standards that you think it would? You know, it's sort of, I, I, it was characterized as a loophole, and I don't think it's quite a loophole. It, it, it may be a little bit more narrow than, than I, I'd choose because it still has to come back for a public hearing, and it's a, it's a fairly lengthy process to do a condo conversion.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Higgins, that is correct. We haven't seen one in a while, so my memory's a little fuzzy, but some standards coming to the top of my head are, right now, we do require two parking spaces for each condo unit. This is, again, in the current ordinance. Also, each unit must have its own laundry room, and they have to meet physical standards, which if it's new construction, would be fairly easy to meet. Not recalling other physical development standards for condos, but those would be two, that would be pretty difficult for an existing property to meet if they're developing under AUD with one parking space per unit.
Okay. Commissioner Pujo?
Okay, same topic, condo conversions. So, um, in addition to what you just responded to on some of the standards for the condos, so we provide additional incentives in the priority housing category. Once, some of the ones that are kind of built incentives, like setbacks and design and whatnot, how would that be treated? Because the structure is already there, so once you have those incentives completed in the AUD process, how would that be treated under a condo conversion?
Um, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Pujo, the development standards you're speaking to, I believe, are the, in some cases, it's a variable setback in the front. Building height potentially, but again, the building height itself has not changed. The number of stories, there's four stories allowed. We would consider the physical development standards as non-conforming. It would be a conversion from rental housing to a different type of ownership housing. It's not a change of use or anything that would cause the, cause there to be a conflict there. So, I believe if they could meet all the physical standards lined out in the condo conversion ordinance, the other standards would, would be non-conforming. Because they don't address setbacks. Condos don't require a different setback than rental housing or a different height requirement. Those are really set by the zone.
So, because it's a, this is a follow-up, do me clarify, is because it's a condo conversion, those built incentives would be non-conforming, but because it's still residential, it wouldn't be required to conform?
Maybe I should not have used "non-conforming." So, the development incentives allowed by AUD are some minor changes to setbacks, the allowance of four stories within forty-five feet, the open space requirements. If, if a existing project were built to AUD standards and complied with them, and I looked over then again at the list of everything required to be a condo, they would have to meet all of those requirements. If there was something not specifically addressed in the condo conversion ordinance, those elements could remain as, you know, again, those are really more set by the zone. Condo conversion standards are, have more to do with livability, laundry rooms, parking spaces, not so much, like I said, building setbacks, height, those are the same either way.
Questions for Ms. Brooke on the presentation before we?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One question, and this is to Anna Gott's handout to us. This is item number six, the survey questions. And so, she has three bullet points that describe kind of the chronology in her account of the number of survey questions, if, when they have changed and so forth. Could you, could you respond to that, Ms. Brooke, if you would? This is of the property owner, survey questions.
Right. Commissioner Schwartz, I, so the comment that there was a seven-question survey of the Mark, and then later, there was a nine-question survey, that's because there were two more questions identified since, you know, the Mark was the first project out of the gate that we applied that first survey to, then we realized through public conversation with the planning commission that we should have, be asking a couple more questions. So, we've since added to that. I'm not sure about the wording changes. I would have to look into that. If the, if the wording of individual questions had changed, I'm not sure.
Okay. And because time is of the essence today, maybe you could at least provide the planning commission, I don't know if this will be relevant October twenty-seventh, but just identify or call out what those two additional questions were that we began asking as of January of this year. Thank you. And, Mr. Chair, you want us to hold our other questions till we've gone through these, correct?
Uh, well, right now, we're at that point, because...
Because I know Mr. Thompson hasn't had a chance. Do you have any questions, Commissioner Thompson? Do you want to go back, back through, or you want to start again?
Why don't you continue?
Okay.
But I just want to make sure of, in the time we have available, that we maybe pick significant questions.
I'm gonna go lightning speed.
So that everyone has a chance.
Okay. My first question, and Ms. Brooke, if this is... My first question, and Ms. Brook, if this is covered in a variety of our documents, just let me know that, but we have so much to go through today. I know a concern about tenant displacement, especially on the east side, has been raised by Councilmember Dominguez, and he has spoken with me about this concern. So I'm wondering either for you or Mr. Vincent, if there's been an exploration of somehow creating a tighter legal link between our tenant displacement ordinance, which we already have on the books, and what could trigger, automatically trigger that consideration by an AUD developer if in fact the tenants were to be displaced or will be displaced? And you can just tell me in the works, you know, I don't need a long answer today, but.
Well, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the tenant displacement assistance ordinance is on the books.
Yes.
It exists. Staff is enforcing it. So I'm not sure the, you know, and it covers, it covers a very wide variety of circumstances, a number of different ways that a tenant could be, could be displaced. Does it capture every potential circumstance? No, and in, quite honestly, it intentionally stayed away from certain circumstances. If a property owner and a tenant agreed to a term lease, at the expiration of that term lease, that, that tenant could be removed from possession, the property owner could take back occupancy. This is a matter of civil law under the Civil Code. And if that was a circumstance, there would not be a dislocation. So, the fact that the ordinance doesn't capture every single one, that's a matter of opinion as to whether or not the ordinance is capturing everything that the council wishes to have.
Okay.
But that topic was specifically decided upon when the tenant displacement assistance ordinance was written.
Okay. Okay, my next question is, Ms. Brook, whether or not, and again, if this exists somewhere in your recommendations, just let me know. And this is from our, actually our July 21 hearing. So questions, perhaps recommendations such as requiring primary residence only? In other words, these can't be secondary residents who have other homes, whether it's in Santa Barbara or outside Santa Barbara? And I think Ms. Flax was the one that brought this up on July 21st. You know, the other side of that is no subletting. Is that, has that been considered by staff as a pack, part of our package of recommendations? Primary residence only, no subletting? And I don't know, you know, legally, I'm just kind of picking up on Ms. Flax's suggestions.
Commissioner Schwartz, I don't believe those too specific were in what I discussed earlier, what I have here as possible ordinance amendment was.
Okay.
Control of rent rates. That has come up before, a requirement that these be rented only as a primary residence or sold as a primary residence and no subletting. I would need our council's advice on how or if we could possibly do that.
Okay, and you know, again, because of the timing today, we don't have the time.
Mr. Chair, I'll just have a quick answer. My, my first blush, you know, response to that would be that those would be fairly strong restraints on alienation and on the, how a property owner is managing their property. We can look into it and I can confidently say we'll have an answer for you on October 27th. But my, my first blush is that you're, you're treading into, particularly in the, the primary residence only, if, if that was, if, if an AUD unit, and I want to remind everybody that not every AUD unit is required to be rental. That, I, I kind of got that sense a bit from some of the public comment, that, that every rental, every AUD unit that's developed, it may be developed as a rental right now, but if it's not part of the priority housing overlay that requires the rental category, it is not technically required to remain a rental unit. And so it could switch back and forth between ownership or rental.
Okay.
Anyway, we'll have an answer for you on the 27th.
The 27th, okay. Then to parking, there've been a number of proposals, both from the public and the planning commission, on looking at both on-street limited parking or restrained parking now and whether or not we could adjust those hours, days of the week, et cetera, and couple them with, or connect them to the required parking on, of a nearby AUD project, along with looking at city parking lots. And I think, as you know, Ms. Brook, I asked Rob Dayton and Sarah Clark, and they happily provided all the data on our city parking lots, including the Coda commuter lot and the Correo commuter lot. And I'm wondering, again, just for today's purposes, if staff has folded in to the parking mix, the parking proposal mix, any links between our available parking assets in, especially in the downtown area and the nearby AUD projects? If we wanted to require an additional parking space, you know, for certain types of units, let's say?
Commissioner Schwartz, I'm, I was just looking over at the transportation planning manager to see if we had already begun looking into that. I'm, he's indicating no. If, if that's something the commission would like to recommend that council consider as, as part of our discussion on October 27th, you could do that.
Okay. All right. I'm going as fast as I can, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, these are, I'm just, I want to make sure I, my next question, Ms. Brook, is whether or not, I think this is important for, for both the decision-maker and general public education and decision-making. So, has staff, does staff have a graph for us that shows, let's say, over a certain number of recent years, the total number of proposed projects that get past the front desk to those that are deemed complete, those that have a building permit and get a certificate of, and those that are constructed? And I ask staff to provide this because both at planning commission and at council, it has seemed to me that there is not a comprehensive fact-based set of data provided to understand this funnel process that we've always had and that organically ensures that the total number of applications at any point in time coming through the city will not be built. And I, so I think there's a misunderstanding about this, and I think we need to set some record straight, especially October 27th, if, if staff would provide that.
We can do that.
Okay, thank you. I guess in the essence of time, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna have to step back from my other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Higgins?
I don't, my questions are related to the infill guidelines and the augmented submittal. So maybe somebody can give me some more color on what that document looks like and what those submittal requirements look like, particularly with regard to a statement of design or a design statement and the teeth that Anthony mentioned that is currently available.
Certainly, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Higgins, those elements, we have already begun working with the HLC on some of those, and as I mentioned, we will bring in the ABR. I'll be at their next Monday meeting, asking for subcommittee members to join the group as well. So, for a while, Mr. Jaime Lamone, the design review supervisor, has been wanting to add to our project's submittal requirements, a design intent statement from the applicant that helps set the stage for the, the goals and objectives of the project as, you know, what they thought about when they designed the project, what are they trying to build into the project that their client needs? And so that they start the conversation with the design review board with that in mind, so that then the boards have an idea of, you know, when they're providing their comments and feedback, what might be counter to the objectives or should, should or could they push harder on some of these areas where they have concern? So I think just making it clearer from the get-go what the intent of the project is, the additional, what was the other items, additional?
Design statement or.
That was, okay, the design statement, infill guidelines, right. So infill guidelines, in our conversations with the design review boards, they, you know, they look to this on the wall, the project compatibility analysis or the seven criteria they look to when they are considering approval of a project. And so it does mention, six, sorry, open space and landscaping, but it's broad. Does the project include an appropriate amount of open space and landscaping? It's difficult for them often to say, sure, it looks like it does, not totally sure. So they would like more data from staff, and we could get this from the applicant, about what, how much open space and landscaping are you providing? How does that compare to what we say are other successful projects in the city? How does that make the units more livable? So if we can provide that information to the design boards, they would feel they have more teeth or information or ability to maybe push back in some areas where they might not believe it is meeting one of these criteria. So overall, they've, they've felt at times, they just have a general lack of information to help them make these, these criteria or compatibility findings.
Okay, that's fine. I guess maybe before the next hearing, we could get an example, if somebody could prepare one of these design statements. So we could look at what a good one looks like versus what maybe a bad example has been over the past that has caused some trouble with the HLC or ABR.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Renee, I just have a question on one slide, and it was the one where you, you take a stab on when you anticipate that the program would sunset. So you say 24, 30 months, and so I'm just interested in why we're able to pick that number and we won't or we can't also then project out based on the development pace what the other numbers will be too? How many number, if we have 500 of the priority rentals in the system right now that would conceivably be at that level of approval, what would that number be at 24 or 30 months? What would the other categories be? And then at that time, or at what time, do you think the 250 units would be occupied for a year and subject, or ready for survey results? And I know you're gonna say, there's like 27,000 moving pieces in that, but, you know, you can't, you can't have an answer that's any worse than I don't know, that's any more mistaken, right? I mean, just put a caveat there. And then, and that, I think that can come in October. I mean, I just think it, if we can pick 24 or 30 months, I would think we'd be able to pick, pull some other numbers out of the air too and just see how they, see how they send. Either the sky is falling or the sky is not falling, but you don't know right now. Like somebody said, it's all fear and anxiety. It's not, it's not an educated guess. And then, Mr. Chair, I'd like, as you go through this process, there's, there's five slides with like eight things on a slide. I'd like to suggest that we at least recognize and agree that we'd like to continue this discussion to another date where there won't be public hearings, so we can really have more time for discussion than we do for staff report and public hearing. I'd be committed to that time. So I just fail to see how that's going to be done responsibly in the next hour. Thank you.
Ms. Brook, uh, Brook, do you have a comment on that? Yours?
No, Mr. Chair, I don't. I, as I mentioned in my presentation, I do have four slides set up that follow these bullet points. If the commission wanted to try to get through some of them, but you couldn't get through all of them, that would be helpful. Also, as I mentioned, over the next three weeks, really, we'll be preparing the adaptive management program report. So I particularly want to hit on those things that you want to see come out of that report for the joint meeting with city council as well. So we, again, the topics are project review process, we've talked about some of that. Ordinance amendments, that covers a lot of topics. The other recommendations really had to do more with unbundling parking and the on-street survey and then the AMP report suggestions.
One issue in my mind, and we spoke about it earlier, is, and you illustrated it on some of your slides, the difference between the R3, R4 zones and the commercial zones, is that we really, I think, have two different types of development under the AUD going in, to evaluate positively or negatively or changes, or we don't know yet. And to, I think if we are gonna look at some recommended changes, we should be aware of where these changes are located, not just make them overall. Because as you said, there's, downtown parking is quite different than in the residential zones, for example. The heights allowed, setbacks, et cetera, also different than the residential zones. So if we're gonna make recommendations, when we make recommendations, I think it might be good to keep a separate list, if you will, because it may impact the way a certain commissioner feels about requiring that type of change or suggestion in that particular area. And those are sort of the two that I see. I, I understand where Mr. Jordan is, making sure that we get something that's well thought out as far as these changes. Ms. Brook, you're suggesting that we go forward and start to talk about a couple, or talk about where we can. I'm, I guess a question of process on those. If, perhaps if a commissioner feels strongly that either in the commercial zone, let's say, or the residential zone or both, about a change they would like to see, let's, we can have them make a motion. An individual commissioner explain why, let's say, what do I want, and they take a vote. Just to see if it's got legs or not, or whether, what the rest of the commissioners feel to pass it on. Does that make sense, at least to start down the list and see where we wind up and whether we do need to continue because we did not approach all the items?
Mr. Chair, I would look to the commission for that answer if that's how they and you want to go about that. I will say that due to scheduling challenges and timing, we would not have time for another planning commission hearing on this. I was intending to go to your commission about a week after the AMP report is released. I'm shooting for the end of September and then would be at your commission that first meeting in October. If all, you know, can stay in place, we would have that time to discuss. The report would already be out, but we could have time to discuss with the commission what's in the report before the joint meeting. And again, this is an adaptive management program report. It's full of, it will be full of what we know now, data that we know now, and recommendations for where the ordinance might need adjustment. It's by no means going to be set in stone or a hard and fast path forward.
Since we're responding to Mr. Jordan's question.
I just, I just, I think I've shared, I've shared this with both of you. I think, in my opinion, too much emphasis is being placed on the timeline for the October meeting. I don't think this discussion necessarily has an overwhelming nexus to the October meeting. It can, our discussion can go on to what's happening after that. And one of my core questions was always, I don't, I don't even know that a majority of planning commissioners agree that something needs to change in the ordinance now versus are the items we want, all the items we want to discuss, part of what needs to change at sunsetting? And that, to me, still remains an overwhelming first question to be asked and answered because I think there are people who want changes or drastic changes now, and there are people who want no changes now and to let it play out and see. And that will, that will, I think, change the course of the discussion as we go forward.
Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The September 15 meeting of the planning commission was canceled. Would it be possible to continue this discussion to then?
I'd have to look at my calendar. I'm not sure. I can't answer that right now.
Okay.
I'm not sure what else is going on that day right now.
Because I, I agree, we're not going to be able to get through all the things today. I'll let him say.
Let me, let me try this in the time that we have available. A question was asked, is, the top question, relative to the fact is what we're seeing, if you will, and say, seeing from projects that are getting approved, both residential zones and the commercial zones, is the AUD program showing what was intended by the general plan objectives? Is that the first question? I'm paraphrasing that a bit.
Mr. Chair, again, I, this discussion is really to the commission. I'm happy to help frame a question if it would help clarify what you, what someone might move to take a vote on, but I don't want to put words in your mouth about what, how someone might make a motion.
Okay. Well, let's, let's start, if I can, if anyone wants to. Can I request a commissioner give their opinion and emotion that the others can chime in on, otherwise we're just speaking individually? And that, that first item could be, do we think, whether in the commercial or residential zones, that the parameters under which the AUD was put into place, from the projects that we see being approved to this point, do we think that's fulfilling the objective?
Mr. Chair?
Sorry, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I wanted to make my question comment on the earlier segment before you start with that. I just. I just wanted to bring up that I agree with Commissioner Jordan on one point that he made, that to me, in this next section that's coming on the motion, to me, what's of most importance are those things that we should do earlier rather than later. And there are a lot of things that we will be discussing over the next two years as we get to that deadline. But I think the purpose, to me, to get across now, or what are those things we should start working on now, because we can't work on all of them at the same time.
Okay. All right. So do I have anyone who wants to comment in general, or do we want to go to specifics?
I would like to, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. My general comment at this point is I'm concerned about rushing or truncating very important discussions and I'm sure additional significant research by the City Attorney's Office and by staff on a number of these proposed or possible ordinance amendments. And I personally think it'd be premature of us, whether it's straw poll vote or otherwise, to try to just quickly run through this list of very significant proposed changes. And I would think that we have two, a series of timelines, Mr. Chair, that would be practical and productive. We have, leading up to October 27th, the joint PC Council hearing, where there'll be some discussion. We don't know how robust we'll be able to have that discussion. And that could be simply a high-level check-in on whether or not the basic premises of the ordinance are, still hold true, with follow-on work to be done by the Planning Commission staff, the City Attorney's Office. My concern is if we try to rush through this list without sufficient additional discussion as Commissioner Jordan is suggesting, I feel that a short-sighted decision could be made on October 27th that doesn't allow us to substantially and effectively research not only the proposed possible changes, but also the implications of these types of possible ordinance changes. So for today's purpose, I would suggest at a high level, whether it's straw poll vote or otherwise, that the Chair, trying to take the temperature of the overall Commission, yes, and Ms. Brooke is nodding, on kind of the largest sets of considerations leading up to a joint discussion with Council. That's where I am right now, because we need so much more discussion and analysis and feedback from staff and Mr. Vincent on a number of these, and today is not the day to do that, or even between now and October 27th. So I'm trying to think of...
Mr. Chair, I have a suggestion, then, I think, based on hearing that. I believe the Commission, I believe, could benefit from some additional data or information before you might feel comfortable making a recommendation about ordinance amendments, and that's completely fair. If you feel ready to provide some input on project review process, some of these are things that we can just implement as staff. Some require some budgetary, you know, resource allocation by Council, but these are not necessarily ordinance amendments. They might be guideline amendments to the HLC and ABR, meeting procedures and project submittal requirements, but something that we can work on beginning right away. In fact, we have already been working on these things. And then the last slide of Adaptive Management Program report, if you, if the Commission recommends that staff analyze these things as we can as part of the AMP, then we could fold that into what we can do with at least the projects that we have already going through the process or under construction. Now, some of these we won't be able to do yet. Again, doesn't require ordinance amendments, so something that we could do more quickly than, say, the items on this slide. As part of the AMP report, we will be providing a lot of statistics about the proposed projects, going through not just in the priority housing overlay, but all projects using the AUD program as well as projects prior to AUD, so you can compare. So it might help inform some of these potential ordinance amendments. If you want to hold off on that discussion, we could do that sometime in the fall, sometime next year. I'm hearing that maybe some of these are not as immediate as maybe other items that might be more time-sensitive.
Mr. Pujo.
Yes, so if, I can make a motion on something if you want to get started on that.
Feel free.
Okay. So project review process, thank you, perfect slide. And I believe, Mr. Chair, that you wanted these done bullet, item by bullet item, is that correct?
Well, it depends on your proposal. Right now, you're looking at project review process.
Right.
To make your proposal in your motion on what you'd like to do on the ones that are on the board.
Of all, okay, so I'm looking at, well, others, I don't have anything to add on it, but for those first three, those are the ones that, to me, are of most immediate need. So should I try a motion that includes all three bullets?
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay. So I will try a motion that includes moving forward as much as we can with work on those three items with additional discussion, I guess, on the October 27th workshop for any of those. So I guess I'll just start there because we'll have some discussion after. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, discussion on the motion?
May I make one point? Myself, or?
Well, why don't we, let's hear from the others first, and you may be able to respond.
So your motion is just to ask staff to come back with more information about how that process that could be improved with more resources, et cetera, to try to iron out some of these design issues?
Yes, and earlier rather than later.
Commissioner Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been to all the HLC subcommittee meetings on this subject, and they still, even, you know, okay, yeah, these are things that they've all agreed to and like to see. I don't see the, I guess, that's another slide, but they also wanted to proceed at the same time with a change to the ordinance to look at the map and remove some of the properties that are in close proximity to the historic, city's historic resources. But I've also gone to all the meetings, or watched all the meetings where AUD projects before both HLC and ABR are, and they struggle constantly because they do not have the ability. And even if the project is referred to the PC, and they're struggling over it, all we can do is make comments. We cannot say, this building is, there are just too many units. You know, you have to reduce the, and I've heard ABR members saying, couldn't you just make it seven units instead of nine? To really make it a good project, particularly when it's in a residential area rather than in the commercial zones. And also the same thing, I hear comments all the time about, there's not enough parking. But we can't say anything about that. And so I think we need to include in this an ability for HLC, ABR, and if referred to the Planning Commission, an ability to make some real decisions on the project. So those are my comments on it.
Okay, we're into discussions on the motion. Thank you. Commissioner Higgins?
It just sounds like Commissioner Lodge has added a bunch more, maybe detail. I don't know if that helps the motion or confuses the motion. So is that part of the same motion? All of those other items? I mean, I would support what she's saying, those other items that ought to be considered in terms of map changes relative to historic properties or districts.
Mr. Chair, if I could speak to the motion. Ms. Brooke has laid out these categories, and you're on the category right now of project review process. The comments that I heard from Commissioner Lodge almost exclusively relate to ordinance amendments. I would suggest that we covered that discussion when discussing ordinance amendments as opposed to the project review process, which is the motion on the table.
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Before, any other commissioners' comments on the project review process motion in a second? I think we do have to start addressing those. I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson, I didn't see your light.
Well, I think that the first bullet up there is one of the most important things that we can do to improve this process, to improve the support given to the ABR and the HLC. There's no doubt that they can make these decisions if they're given the necessary raw materials, but to be given a set of plans on the day of a meeting, roll it out on this table, and say, review and approve a project is not giving them a fair shake. They should have the same level of background information in a timely fashion that we do. If we were to review one of those projects, which we have on two occasions, I think, we get a staff report at least a week prior, we get a site visit. They don't get that, so they should get that. They should get, at least a week prior, the plans and the staff report, and they should do a site visit, and they can make the decisions. They're quite qualified to make the decisions. I think they should be given more discretion, and they should know that they have more discretion in making these approvals, in what is approved. And it shouldn't have to come up to the Planning Commission. That was one of the reasons that this was put in there, to make it a simpler process to get through. But that doesn't mean you cut the ABR and the HLC off at the knees in what they can review and approve. So I strongly support the idea of increasing support to those two design review bodies.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you. My only comment here, as the second of the motion, is that I would still be willing to support the motion if Commissioner Pujo wants to move forward. However, I want to clarify the nature of my support. My support is walking right up to the line of support and not a change in authority in the scope of decision-making. I referenced this on July 21st, that, and so this would then spill over into an ordinance amendment, a housing element change, average unit density size incentive program ordinance change. I'm not in favor of changing the ordinance to push the scope of authority of ABR, HLC beyond. However, I agree with Commissioner Thompson on the additional scope of support provided for them to make the proper and helpful decisions within their charter, within their scope of authority. Thank you.
I'm going to have a comment. Why don't you go ahead?
Okay, thank you. I wanted to comment on my own motion, because I think you wanted some explanation as the reason for the motions, and so this is mine. These three items, the first three bullets, not the others, I think are a big missing hole in what we're already doing. I agree with Commissioner Thompson that we're not giving the HLC and the ABR the tools they need for proper analysis of their design. And each of these relate to me, the design and the compatibility issues, and I think that's a giant hole and one that we really need, HLC and ABR. We need to rely on them for this. So I am strongly in favor of each of these going forward as quickly as possible. None of these, at least in my motion, the way I anticipated it, include anything in regards to actual ordinance provisions. They're all related to design.
Okay. My comment on the motion, definitely increase staff support, site visits, analysis, the same as we get, okay? And coming up with what the goal is of the particular developer, I think, is great. We may have suggested that one time in the past. To understand why they're developing a project the way they are, I think is great. And that will give us a better understanding through the approval process as well, and what constraints they're operating under. The additional consideration for historic resources in favor of that, but both that item and multi-unit mixed-use guidelines, the details of how that's going to be implemented, I think, is important because it does have an effect on land use. And there's a balancing, I think, that has to go on. We have to respect resources, but we also need to provide rental housing. And as someone said, there are historical resources selectively throughout the city. So I think what I would like to recommend is that when the subcommittees in HLC and ABR come up with their proposals, that as a courtesy, that the Planning Commission gets to look at it and review before it goes to City Council, and not just City Council directly, and I'm making that an amendment to the motion, but on things that affect policy or land use, I would like for us at least to get a look at it and provide comments when it's finalized, considering the importance of it, but considering also balancing. And I don't know if the maker of the motion would include that, but that's my feeling.
Mr. Chair, could you rephrase what you think the amendment to the motion would be?
I said on items, the support is fine for consideration for historic resources and propel multi-unit mixed-use guidelines. If there are certain recommendations that are coming out that are going to be impacted, I would suggest that we get a look at it before it goes to City Council for approval.
Okay. So we would look at what the additional consideration and what the guidelines look at, look like before they go to Council?
Yes, because that's going to affect Project, City Project.
Well, as the motion maker, I could include that if the second would be willing to do that as well.
Well, my question would be to Mr. Vincent, does Mr. Chair's recommendation actually trigger an ordinance amendment rather than a process change?
I don't think so.
Okay. Then, yes, that's satisfactory with me, and I'll second that.
Mr. Jordan?
I just want to chime in, too, just so you know that everybody's chiming in on that word "increase." It's kind of ambiguous, and I agree with what you've heard so far, that to me means, although it's contradictory to what we set up originally to move through the system quickly and less expensively, I agree that the word "increase" means the equivalent of a Planning Commission hearing at the design board.
Mr. Chair. For the record, I do agree with the scope here that Commissioner Schwartz laid out, such that the process doesn't equate to a change to our housing elements, such that some of these projects are now no longer viewed as being by right or a certain limited level of review, and I just want to try to narrow that scope. What's that children's book, if you give a mouse a pancake or something like that? We have to be careful what we, excuse me, design here in that the submittal doesn't end up, as Commissioner Jordan put, you know, a conditional use permit for what was previously just a trip to HLC.
Commissioner Thompson?
In answer to what Mike just said, I don't see it as a big disincentive to the applicants. It would require more work on the part of staff because every one of these projects has a staff planner, and so the planner would have to prepare a little more information and a staff report than they would normally. And they would have, somebody would have to support a site visit. But the delay to the applicant wouldn't be significant, just be more work on the staff. But I think if we want to get a good product at the end of the day, I think it's worth a little more work from the staff to do it.
Okay. If we have no other comments, we have a motion that was revised.
Just under discussion of the motion, may I just say one thing? Is that possible? No?
Okay. Would the Commission like to hear Mr. Renell make a point on this? Okay, thank you.
Look, as someone who lives with, it was on, as someone who lives with guidelines, you know, there hasn't been much discussion about that third bullet, but that is a big, there's a big elephant there that I don't think you should underestimate. Guidelines are only as good as, you know, good as the guidelines are, and we're still to this day living with the Haley-Milpus guidelines, which are, you know, 30 years old or something like that. I mean, I just think you have to be really, that is a major, major planning effort to do good guidelines. I think you should, HLC and ABR and maybe a consortium of architects and everybody involved in this ought to be discussing the issues and the items that they need more teeth in, but I just think it's unrealistic to think that you're going to just sort of that quickly get the guidelines.
Okay. Mr. Chair. Just to mention there in response to that, that this really is the start of a work program, the way I see it. And I think, I think that's what we all intend, because we have a lot of work to do. It isn't a fait accompli. It's the start of a project, and it's prioritizing what gets done now versus in a couple of years from now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
In response to what Mr. Canal said, I wouldn't see this as being done quickly. And I don't think anything in those words up there says anything about quickly. There's no deadline, and I totally agree that it requires a major... There's no deadline, and I totally agree that it requires a major effort on the part of not only the planning community and staff, but the people like Mr. Canal that have to work with it. But we've been talking around this for years about updating some of these guidelines, like the Haley-Carter guidelines. We've been kicking that can down the road, and it's really time to get serious about getting City Council prioritization of working on that. But nothing in all of that says we got to get it done in any quick fashion and make mistakes by doing it too quickly. I think we ought to do it, but we ought to get started.
Yeah. Well, my comment, I agree. We did have a multifamily design guideline subcommittee that was chaired by Mr. Lamong and members of the HLC and ABR, and Commissioner Schwartz and myself. And I think it's, we were making recommendations relative to a facilitator, and that hasn't come about. But I think it's important to get the Planning Commission involved in these discussions as well, because we are looking at land use. No sense implementing something if it can't work. And there's other considerations, just like the architect should have input as well. And that gives us a chance to get this a public hearing also, a Planning Commission public hearing, to hear the presentation and ask our questions. So that's why I suggested and am in favor of the motion as amended. There's no other discussion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Now, we had another list that you had.
Mr. Chair, I think, given that we have about a half an hour left, one other topic we might be able to touch on is elements that would go into staff's analysis as we prepare the Adaptive Management Program report. These were some suggestions made by Planning Commissioners at the last meeting. You may have others today, and some have come up today as well, that I said that we would follow up and address in that report. So I think as much as you could advise us what would be helpful and what we can accomplish, at least in this first report, to help inform any future Planning Commission recommendations to council over the next year or two, let's say, I would look to the commission for guidance on what aspects haven't already been brought up or aren't listed here that could be helpful for you, to inform you about any potential changes or not to the AUD program.
If it's okay with the commissioners, this is a pretty long list, including others on there. Perhaps if someone would, maybe we could just go down the list in the time we have available, line by, item by item, to see if we feel we would like staff to put this into the ongoing Adaptive Management Program that's reported on. And if we have any suggestions on either clarification or expansion of that particular line item, I think that would be good, but perhaps we can do this one line at a time.
One clarification question. You're talking about the Adaptive Management Program as relates to the AUD ordinance. Okay.
Correct.
Not the overall general plan, Adaptive Management Program.
Correct. The report we'll be giving to you and council at the end of October will be both our General Plan Implementation Report, which covers all aspects of the general plan, with the focus this year of our AMP report on the AUD program. So I'm talking about that second piece.
Anyone want to, are we okay to go in that direction? Does anybody want to make a motion on the first item? Okay. The first bullet.
Mr. Chair, I'd be interested in hearing my fellow commissioners' thoughts about whether or not projects in the R3, R4 zones that are AUD need to be kicked up to a different level of review to the Planning Commission. It seems as though the big issues are affordability and impacts to neighborhoods. I don't know that we can really handle affordability issues now without a lot of data, but the level of review and whether or not there's an impact to a neighborhood, particularly with regard to parking, and whether or not applicants providing enough parking, or there's enough analysis done of right-of-way availability, and whether or not those should be decisions made by the commission.
Ms. Brooke, I think that's the, you can, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think that's the intent of looking at the two zones separately relative to impacts. And impacts could be favorable or negative. I guess we could look at it both ways. But the idea is to break it down for evaluation purposes between the two districts.
Mr. Chair, that's correct. In as much as we can gather data and what we know about the different development standards for AUD projects in commercial versus R3, R4 zones, because the development standards are different, we, right, maybe impacts is too much of a leading word. Evaluate, all we could evaluate at this point are really pending and approved projects. We don't have yet a project occupied, so it might help if we could hear from the commission on what's important about that, if we want to distinguish between residential and commercial zones, what parts of those project proposals are important to call out and report on.
Comments on that?
Mr. Chair, may I? Mr. Chair, may I?
Go ahead.
I think there's some unpacking of a couple of these bullet points, from my perspective, that warrant more discussion, either by the Planning Commission Subcommittee with staff, you know, offline, and then bringing it back to the full commission. But when I look at that first bullet point, evaluate potential impacts and, the whole notion of evaluating impacts requires a great deal of study with timelining, et cetera. And so I don't know if staff's proposal, and Mr. Chair, if you're looking at the, kind of the highest level conceptual support for this, with much more follow-on work to be done by Planning Commission. If you're asking for that, I could support this at a high concept level. But between that and monitor on, so now I'm looking at the fourth bullet point, monitor on-ground conditions, before and after that too, we've talked about that as a subcommittee, requires quite a bit of staff involvement. And so I guess I'm looking for clarification about whether you're asking for a high-level concept support for this in whoever makes the motion. But if it's any more deep, with open timelines, you know, I could be inclined to generally support, you know, more work on these. Anything below a general concept support would be hard for me to support at this point without much more discussion on a couple of these bullet points in particular, the first bullet point and the fourth bullet point. So, thank you.
Watch.
I think this comes out of a comment made by ABR member Howard Witash, in which he said, "It's not so hard to make AUD projects, high-density projects compatible in the commercial zones, but it's very hard in the residential zones." And I think this, I think the residential zone should be taken out of the priority overlay, but that would require an ordinance amendment to protect the neighborhoods. So I'm not sure, you know, evaluate potential impacts. I'm not sure what we would gain.
Okay. Commissioner Thompson?
I think the wording kind of maybe gives the wrong flavor to start with. When we talk about impacts, it generally has a negative connotation. And I would hope that what we're doing is not impacting any neighborhoods, otherwise we're not doing it right. So when we say impacts, maybe we shouldn't be saying that. Maybe we should talk about differences. But I would hope that we're not impacting anybody's neighborhood.
I think, Mr. Chair, in terms of usefulness for the AMP report, and especially this year's report, I think the best we could do with that is, when we provide data about these projects, we can highlight which are in residential zones, which are R3, R4, just medium-high-density developments, which are R3, R4 priority housing overlay projects, which are commercial or high-density priority housing. Because again, right now, all we have is data. We actually can't even have an opinion about impacts yet. So again, it's the first report. It might help us set up future reports and know how to collect the data, if that's something that's useful to know.
Commissioner Jordan?
I agree with Mr. Thompson. So when you talk about impacts, I mean, I may consider them impacts right now, the way I see them, but I think they're differences. And I don't think you're in any position yet to attempt this in the next month that I have. But two of the greatest differences I see, in particular on the issues in residential zones, is the differences in heights between maybe single-family houses and what's being developed right next to them, a three-story next to a single family. And then, there might be a better phrase, but also the volume, square footage volume developed on a parcel compared to the square footage volume on adjacent parcels. And that would, those, I think, would fall into the category you just discussed on future type of reporting, to either, you know, when people have continually gripe about their perception of what's there, that you actually have some data to say, "Well, it is much bigger than everything around it," or "It does take up much more of the lot than everything around it, and maybe it is ripe for discussion then."
Just following up, I think one thing we need to say, we're talking about multifamily residential zones. I know we changed that in the AUD. You see residential zones, and it becomes a threat. So there is zoning that allows pretty much what the AUD does, whether you had AUD or not, within that zone. Still have to do compatibility analysis and have the findings. But the AUD is really no different, unless I'm wrong, than a variable-density project would be, without any limitations on how large those units could be, or how many parking garages they can have. And then you have size, bulk, and scale issues. So I think if you break down, as you did today, what's different in the R3, R4 zone, by the nature of the zone itself to AUD, and also what's different in the commercial zone by the nature of AUD, that would be very helpful when you're looking at changes in conditions. Are they really changes, or are they normally allowed anyway? It's just it's now taking place. So I guess I don't hear, do I hear anything about making a motion on evaluating potential impacts? I don't, I think that's...
You want to go bullet point by bullet point?
That's what I wanted to do, because we're stuck on the first one. I didn't want to go down the rest of them.
Mr. Chairman, if you're looking for some sort of a formal motion, I would move that we direct staff to evaluate potential differences between commercial zones and residential zones to start the discussion going in the years in the future, of these projects in those various zones.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion?
Second. Second, yes.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
I would, I have, I guess, a discussion item or a question, perhaps, to throw on the table. To that motion as worded, to me, what also comes up in my mind is different neighborhood areas. So R3 or R4 in one neighborhood may have a different layout than, say, downtown versus upper state, or something like that. So if we could add to that some recognition of at least the designated neighborhood areas attached to that, I think that would be also helpful.
Yeah. Is that acceptable to the maker of the motion and a second?
That's fine. That could be useful information going forward.
Yes.
But I also would say that dealing with those differences between various residential neighborhoods is part of the discretion that we need to give to the design boards when they're doing these, reviewing these projects.
Okay. Thank you for the comment. We have a first and second as amended. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor? Say aye. Aye, any opposed? Great. Thank you. Okay. Ms. Brooke, in our 16 minutes, do you want us to continue on down to see what might be interesting to a particular commissioner that he would like to make a motion on, he or she?
I think, Mr. Chair, as was brought up, the last bullet really needs to be unpackaged, and we need to dig into that deeper to understand what's meant by that bullet. Evaluate annual survey data, that is something we would do anyway. It's just we don't have it yet, but, so I don't think we need to spend time on that one.
So I've heard anecdotally that we're concerned about the survey data and that we may not be able, what we've put as a requirement on these projects, and we intend to, that we may not legally be able to collect it. Is that just something that's just being told anecdotally?
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, here's the situation. So we had a number of projects going through and developing under the AUD program before we, where we were not requiring, making this a condition of approval, that they provide the annual survey data. It was staff's understanding for a while that that was only required of those projects in the priority housing overlay, so those are the only projects that received that condition. So many went through and received approvals without that condition until several months ago, we started adding it to all projects. So yes, there are some that have approvals, that don't have this as a condition of approval. What we intend to do is each year, once these projects are developed and they're occupied, we would have query all those projects that have been developed under the AUD program, send a letter to the owner at that time requesting that they voluntarily comply by providing this data, but it's not a condition of approval on all of them at this point. It just, it took us time to catch up, and it was just added later to some of these projects.
Mr. Chair, if I might suggest, in terms of the process handling the rest of this slide, may I make a suggestion? Just, for example, staff already has, I mean, Joshua Hagmark's team already obtains and utilizes water use, so we have that data. That's not something we need to collect anew. And could they report it out, you know, periodically? That's something we could talk with staff about. Lastly, not the last bullet, but monitor on-ground conditions. My recommendation would be that the subcommittee, that is Commissioners Jordan, Campanella, and myself, come back with staff, reconvene with staff, to put together a list of what, you know, a list of the on-ground conditions to bring back to Planning Commission for additional vetting that we might want to monitor and evaluate, just as a way to efficiently kind of tease out some details for that, as opposed to just trying to do an up or down vote on this today. Thank you.
Okay. Would you want to make a, let's have a motion on that, to see that there's support for the subcommittee review?
Okay. So for the bullet reading, monitor on-ground conditions before and after AUD project, my motion would be to recommend that this item go back to the Planning Commission Subcommittee meeting with staff to develop a list of the conditions to be monitored and evaluated, with no specific timeline attached to that, but as time-efficiently as possible.
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
I have a question to the motions. So I hope in there is the flexibility, if that were done, which sounds like a reasonable idea, but if that were done, I hope there's flexibility enough in the bullet language that it also includes not just on-ground conditions of the lot being developed, but a comparison perhaps to other adjacent ones, or also plan to plan, not necessarily ground to plan. I think we should open it up just a little bit, and I hope that would be part of what the subcommittee discusses also.
Okay.
Do you have some language proposed? Because I was looking at this being as broadly defined as possible for the subcommittee to provide recommendations back to Planning Commission as to what's some geographic boundaried area.
Okay. So one of the things we can come up with as...
Maybe add neighborhood.
Well, you know, then what's a neighborhood? We've had that discussion before.
Why don't we come up with a definition at the subcommittee level?
Yeah, let's do that. I'd like the subcommittee to take this up.
What's critical is people are concerned, okay? And I really respect that. And the idea is, let's try to find out if, what the impacts could be before and after, and that will help us adjust to maybe alleviate or have to permanently take away those, you know, take away those concerns by our different type of approaches we have to develop.
So I think for streamlining and giving us the most flexibility, I would recommend leaving the language as staff has expressed it here in this bullet point, again, within the motion that I made.
Okay. So you're leaving it alone. We already had a second on that. All in favor? And Mr. Jordan, you're going to be one of the participants, so if you want to continue on with us, if we all want to continue on, and I think we should. And again, this is going to be in line with what the staff effort is, anyway. We're not creating new work. What we're trying to do is assist. And Ms. Brooke, I think hopefully you realize that, we're trying to go in keeping with what you want to know anyway, but try to help. And so that's not creating a new work effort. And it's going to be something that's an ongoing information that's going to be wanted for the AMP updates. Correct?
Well, Mr. Chair, the work with the subcommittee is perhaps maybe not... Well, Mr. Chair, the, the work with the subcommittee is perhaps maybe not work that we didn't anticipate. What comes of this bullet point could be significant staff work. That's, but we can have that discussion at the subcommittee.
I think on a kickoff, let's see, when we do get together, let's see what makes it efficient for you, and goals and objectives, and let's, let's be a help, not a hindrance on ours, okay? We respect all the time that you have to put out there. Okay, for a second, did we, we have the first and the second about the committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. I would, let's see, I'll go around water use. I'd like to make one suggestion if I can, or maybe two suggestions for consideration. We talk about rents, and I'm going to make two suggestions. One is, we hear what the market will bear, and et cetera, and the market is the market. I think we need to do rental surveys out there as well as part of this process, or gets ready for it. I was out at Hollister Village over the weekend. They are, there's no units available, there's 266 units, and their pricing is pretty similar, maybe a little bit below what we see at the mark for the opening prices. And they're somewhat larger units, they've got more two bedrooms in the mix, which I know what Mr. Cornell said, but I mean, we have, if anything, I think going forward we should evaluate, we may have too few two bedrooms within the mix of the downtown units. We're sort of like 50/50 mix of studios and one bedrooms, and 50, and the rest of the 50 is two bedrooms. And is that really fitting? Should that be citywide, certain areas? But really, families look at two and three bedrooms. And one of our, the items in our housing element is larger units for families, and being the three-bedroom. And we do tell the state we're complying with that, and that's our policy. So we can make tweaks, but I don't think we want to eliminate the family option on twos and threes. But I think if you do go out there, you will see that people are, you've got two people, two incomes, you've got workers, there is support going on from the chambers members out there to help get some special rates for people. But I think we have to start looking at new and what's going on, to see whether we are different or not. And also, the underwriting. I believe there, you know, whether 30% is right for the incomes that we're looking at, or it should be somewhat of a higher number. So, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Chair.
I want to, I want to finish. That's a project, you also have the Tobes projects. I would look at newer projects, as well as what some of the condominiums are running for in town, to see how this looks by comparison, what the rents are, as we go forward, as far as taking survey information, but also measuring against the market. Number two, if I can, and we'll go back to your question. We talk about restrictions and price controls, and targeting, if we can, those that really need the housing, whether it be the big A affordable or middle income. We've mentioned this on a number of occasions. We have provisions in our housing element for employer-sponsored housing, for co-ops, for density bonus, for state bonus, and there are tools out there that can help you get the income levels that you want to achieve in a project. What we need to do is sit down and figure out how to formulate it. What documentation do we need from the city? What support we need from the city? How to put the nonprofits together with for-profits developer, to see how things will work? And I'd like to, I guess I can make a motion, or, I'd like to make a motion that, on that particular case, that we encourage staff to talk to the joint group about getting a task force together to see how we can help achieve getting housing for the income levels that are needed in addition to market rate. And we have the provisions in our ordinance, and I think unless we get a group together to try to work, come up with something and ways to do it, and work with employers, it's not going to happen. So I know we're wringing our hands about this AUD program, but there are other ways to help satisfy the need in the community, and I think we need all the creative people we can to help try to formulate that. So I would like to make a motion for a task force to be, work, to work on the provisions in our housing element that could try to produce pricing of housing that would be reasonable for middle-income workers, or affordable, or the combination of both.
I'll second your motion.
For a second, any discussion?
Yeah, you mentioned something about surveys on other apartment pricing, so is that part of this? Not a different motion?
Not a different motion, yes. We get back to that discussion.
Never mind.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
On your, on that motion, I would just observe that that's the purpose that the AUD program was established under in the first place. 10 years ago or so, when a couple of us started talking to Jan Hubbell about how do we incentivize people to build rental units that are more affordable to the general population, we weren't getting any rentals. We hadn't gotten rentals for decades. The whole purpose was to come up with ways to incentivize it, and the AUD program is what came out of that years later. So while I don't disagree with what you, what you say, I just want to observe that that was the reason the AUD program was initiated.
Mr. Pujo?
I, I would like a clarification also to the motion. So are you limiting this task force approach to only AUD projects, and only as it relates to our adaptive management process? Or does it go beyond that?
It goes beyond that. It goes utilizing tools and desires that's within the AUD ordinance for cooperative housing and employer-sponsored housing. Also, we have the need for big A affordable housing. There's also state density bonus law. There's a number of objectives, and we also, in our housing element, have to be producing the big A. You know, we have a percentage of those that are required, out of the however many per year, and out of the 1,200. So I don't want to restrict it just to AUD. I want to go beyond that, to try to come up with ways that we can, beside just, beside just letting the market indicate what happens, which is, which is a big factor when we, you know, at least when we had no housing at all being produced on rentals. Okay, so that was step one. But if we are going to try to target, rather than rent control, let's come up in a positive way with those type of programs that could earmark and target the people that we'd like to see more of have housing.
Okay, and so now my follow-up comment on that. Overall, generally speaking, I like the idea, and certainly I liked the idea before we resorted to something more like an actual rent control-type structure, certainly. But I'm concerned that it's a big bite out of an apple, or maybe it's a big apple, that to develop this task force, and I'm a little unsure of what we're really asking for in terms of scope. So for right now, personally, I think I'd feel more comfortable starting with maybe something that was more limited to actually the adaptive management programming and the AUD program, and then kind of see from there where it might develop into a broader context. So I, I would hate not to support the motion, because it's a great idea, but I just have a concern that it needs a little bit more scoping or understanding of what we would be really doing with it.
Okay, if I can, and that's a good point, a second. I think the, the starting point is to look within the AUD ordinance at the cooperative housing and employer-sponsored housing, okay? Which is there, okay? I think that's probably step number one on how to implement it, how we can best do that. But then I also think we have a concern, as we hear it from the nonprofits, about them being able to get the big A affordable, given the land cost and the, and the need for other housing. If we keep on saying that things, that the housing that we're creating is not for attended, because we don't like 120 to 200%, and we don't like 180%, we don't like the particular incomes, I think rather than trying to penalize it or get rid of it, that we should start looking at other options, both what's available under the AUD and affordable housing programs as well. So if you'd like me to refine my motion, to just look at how to enforce the, the AUD provisions of cooperative housing, less expensive housing, share housing, whatever you want to call it, and then also workforce and employer housing specifically, I'd be happy to do that, if that's going to be necessary to get the votes.
Mr. Chair, so if I, I understood as the secondor of the motion, let me comment if I could for a moment. What we haven't seen in the course of the AUD ordinance and program playing out is a natural coalition coming together of subsidized affordable housing developers and market-rate rental housing developers. Chair Campanella and I have been following this closely. Two years ago, we spoke with our community development director, George Buhl, about our initial concern right out of the gate. We were concerned that these two development sectors would not be working in tandem, perhaps on a single property, an assembly of parcels, to develop simultaneously subsidized affordable housing for the very low and low-income residents in our community, along with market rate. Because workforce isn't defined in our program, and in the ordinance, we've let the, we've let the ordinance take its course, and the development community take its course. So if I'm understanding, Mr. Chair, the intent behind your motion, and I still be willing to support this if this is, if this was your intent, is we're looking for the city to be a catalyst, to be a leader in bringing the communities together, so that perhaps there are co-development opportunities to develop for all demographics at all levels of income, to the best we can with our limited available real estate in the city of Santa Barbara, so that we get some subsidized affordable housing built, at the same time we get market-rate rental housing, or for-sale employer housing developed. So, and this has been my concern all along, I really don't want to see us pitting one demographic, one neighborhood, one income level against each other. That, that's not productive. So that we can move everybody up a little bit with additional housing for some percentage of everybody who's important to our community is, is my, is my intention. And, Mr. Chair, if that's kind of the thrust of, or the, the thrust of which your intention was, I'm still willing to support the motion as a secondor of the motion.
Okay, any other comments? Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, after many comments from Mrs. Flax about the need, you know, should be cooperative housing, and this other, other employer housing, the possibility is there, but no one has come forward with it. I'm not sure how the city, given that it's there, while, you know, there's this wild interest in the high-priority AUD, because of the incentives the city is given by, in effect, giving more property to the property owners, I don't see what, what could be achieved by a task force.
Okay. Well, we won't know until we, unless we try. So anyhow, we have a first and a second. Any other comments?
Scope is limited, or not limited?
To be determined, I think.
I, I think let's determine.
So the original motion?
The original motion, and determine how best to coordinate it. And what I, and I've given the example, what I think of, on Salsaboy Street, we have an affordable project next to a market. On Upper State, the mark is next to an affordable project. They just happen to be next to each other. I mean, if we could probably try to come up with ways that they can, as Commissioner Schwartz said, co-develop, and get the benefits to both sides, is there a way to do that? And if there is, that'd be great. If there isn't, then we said, well, we can't do it. But I think we need to try. So that's my last comment. Anything else? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
I think sadly I'll need to say no, because the scope is so broad.
Okay.
Was that 5-2, Pujo and Lodge? No?
Commissioner Lodge?
Mr. Chair, as you know, I need to leave. I had a kind of a time certain today, so I don't know if the commission is going to take up, let's see, what slide is this? Ms. Brooks', a possible ordinance amendment slide. I'm sorry, unfortunately, I won't be able to participate if, if the commission's going to continue on with that.
Logically do that, that's Ms. Brooks' direction. Okay, Mr. Jordan?
So I would like to go back to the original question I asked a couple hours ago, and that's if we could get a feeling from the commission that there are ordinance changes that need to be enacted immediately, or ordinance changes that we would be working on for the 24 to 30, 30-month-out sunset date. And if there are, then what are we going to do? When are we going to get together? And if there aren't, then what are we going to do? When are we going to get together? One of them, one of them would be obviously more immediate. But I know there are people sitting up here that want immediate ordinance changes. I know there are probably people sitting up here that want no immediate ordinance changes. And if you deem that there's enough of the do, I think we owe it to those people to give them a, a setting to make their arguments to the rest of us, or those that don't.
Okay. Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are a whole bunch of issues that I'm concerned about. I, you know, all may remember a memo I sent out August 15th with a lot of suggestions. And, well, and the possible ordinance amendments doesn't include an adjustment to the map, which was requested from HLC. I was interested in that. And I was surprised, not surprised to hear it from Mrs. Flax, but was surprised to hear it from Brian Cornell, develop some method for rent-restricted units. And I had suggested in that, in my memo, that since that a fourth floor be allowed if a certain percentage of the units are rent-restricted. Now, I know there are all kinds of problems about rent control, but the state does allow bonus density with rent restrictions. And if they can do it, I'm not sure why the city can't. So I mean, there are a whole bunch of other items that we, I think we need to talk about. And also, I brought up, it isn't reflected here, but you know, when are we going to stop accepting applications? There is no test period, in effect, because if we keep on developing without the benefit of knowing what the effects of these projects are, and that was the idea behind the experiment, it wouldn't matter what happens, because they'll be going, going ahead. I think we need to look at how, and I did say this at the last meeting, I'm not sure it got carried forward, but that we've got to look at stopping accepting applications. We have way more than the city would normally build in, well, we have up to as many as we build over a period of 10 years, that are in the pipeline now. And we've got to have some way to make it a valid experiment, and to find, and to be able to apply what we learn from the experiment to future development. So I, I'm really concerned about that.
Ms. Lodge, I didn't want to interrupt you, but I do need to excuse myself. But just in advance of any vote, any proposal put forward with any particular ordinance amendment recommendations, I, I'm not comfortable without substantial additional discussion supporting, so I just think this is too important. So if, if there's going to be more discussion today, I won't be able to support any kind of expeditious, you know, vote on changing the ordinance.
I'm not suggesting that we talk about these now. I'm saying that they should be included at another session.
Mr. Chair, I do think we need to adjourn in the next five minutes, because the Finance Committee needs to begin setting up in this room.
Okay. I want to just talk to Mr. Jordan about, do we, relative to the list of changes. But, Mr. Jordan, I think you wanted to know whether the commission feels to defer these over time?
Well, no, I, I know the, I know the answer to my question, because I've got Commissioner Lodge's email right here, and it's four pages, and three and a half pages of them would involve an ordinance change. So I know she's in, I know in particular she's interested in an immediate ordinance change. I may have some issues that I want to fall on the sword on, that might not be hers, might be mine, that might lead to an immediate ordinance change. I, you've obviously heard Commissioner Schwartz, she's not, I think she's probably not in favor of an immediate ordinance change, but be a future planning. But I think we need to resolve a discussion and make a recommendation of, does anything rise to the top of the kettle to be an ordinance change recommendation right now to council, or not? And then, you know, if you answer the first one yes, that kind of says we need to work on it pretty quickly. If you answer it no, then we have some time.
Okay.
So, so I'd, I'd like to suggest, again, that we continue to another date, or a date as yet unspecified. Again, it has no nexus to the October meeting necessarily, but, you know, a date in the next 45 days or something, when we have time, and that it is a continued, a continued item, so that we can immediately start discussing these issues. And Commissioner Lodge can talk about her particular, I can, anybody else can, others can make the, make the case for why not to do it. And then we can come up with a group consensus on either there are things that need to be suggested immediately, or there aren't. suggested immediately, or there aren't. If that needs to be a motion, I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? Commissioner Pujo?
Just clarification. So this would be continued, but without a specific date or something like that? That's what the motion is?
They can tell a date right now. And the discussion is to focus those issues that need to be acted on sooner than later. In other words, in the next few months versus 36 months. Well, as I see it, a case made for those in a group consensus on whether they do need to be immediate or not. I still think that's my core question.
So at the end of that particular hearing, whenever it is, in the next 45 days, we'll have consensus in the form of motions moving forward on what, if any, changes need to be made immediately to the ordinance.
Okay, I guess a question, Ms. Brooke, is what does that do for, if we cannot convene, what does that do for you relative to the joint meeting? Essentially, then, it would be reported what we recommended to this topic as far as changes, to have additional meetings. And I would, I would hope then, until we do, that the laundry list of items that were prepared maybe can go on hold, so there's not a misimpression that these were favored by the commission until we actually go through them and decide, because they were comments made by individual commissioners.
That's correct, Mr. Chair. And also correct in that we are not identifying a, a meeting date to which this is continued. It would have to be after October 27th. We just wouldn't be able to convene another meeting on this topic prior to that, and that's fine. My understanding is it would be a continued discussion of potential ordinance amendments, and trying to divide those up into shorter versus long-term work programs. And, sorry, the second part of your question to me.
Oh, as far, yes, the items on the list would not be represented to the City Council, that these are, that these are recommendations by the Planning Commission, because we have not discussed them yet in detail.
Correct. We have had a vote of the HLC on potential recommendations going forward, so I would relay those to the City Council. Most of those were actually recommendations for the Subcommittee to continue working on. So we do have a vote of HLC recommended ordinance amendment. I would not relay Planning Commission recommendations unless they were subject to a vote of the Planning Commission. So I, at that continued meeting, for which we do not yet have a date, that would be the time to pull out the menu of options and discuss as a full commission.
So you're saying right now, we have no open time on a Thursday afternoon at Planning Commission between now and October 27th? We already know that?
I'm saying I don't have time.
Okay.
I don't have time to provide you the information or support that meeting between now and October 27th.
Okay.
Well, I take that back. I was planning to go to your commission on October 6th, after the AMP report is released, and we would discuss that. But I don't think we would have enough time on that meeting unless something is changed to take on this topic of potential ordinance amendments.
As, as far as enough time, we have the, I respect what you're saying. Just questioning, we have, we have a list. Right now, on your, your report, that's being prepared on adaptive management, include our recommendations, but also your report to the joint meeting would be that we, we did not come up with any, we could not come up with any at this time prior to the meeting of proposed changes to the ordinance at all.
That's correct.
Okay, so the time, if we were to do it at that meeting, would that help the process? Or it's not enough time to actually vet what we're suggesting before the meeting, before the joint meeting?
Well, I would just say you wouldn't have any more information.
Than we do now.
Than you do now.
Yeah, because it was individual comments.
Right. So, yeah.
I guess what I'm saying is, I don't know, because you could have been prepared to talk about it today on that slide, so I don't know that, I mean, I don't want to presume on your time, so just, I'll say that upfront. But I would just, I, I don't, I just envision it as, there's obviously not enough time today. There could have been, we could have just devoted the entire day today on that one slide and talked about it. To me, it's more of a, I see this more as an internal work session time, whenever it is, for discussion on this side of the table, not so much on that side of the table, to see what resonates with more planning commissioners than not. And then there might be work after that, but I don't see a body of work to take place before that. I think, I mean, I had a page, Brian Barnwell had a sheet, Sheila's got four pages, other people have opinions that they may or may not already have talked about. And I think what's important is to try, or to me, what's important is to try and take all that information and figure out what's, what's not going to stick on the wall, what is going to stick on the wall with the seven of us, and then figure out where it goes from there. So I, I don't, I don't see it so much as a structured, staff-consuming thing. It's more just having somebody sit there and take notes on a bunch of guys in the sandbox.
Well, I, again, I can't commit to a date, because I don't know what you already have on your agendas coming up. I also, I thought I was hearing from the commission that it wasn't necessarily so time-sensitive that it had to happen before the joint meeting, but...
What I'm saying is, it's, it has no nexus to reporting at the joint committee meeting, or joint council and commission meeting. You can get back to us.
Okay, I'll get back to you on that.
Commissioner Lodge?
I just wanted to, you mentioned requesting a rent survey data. There, there is one that was done by staff, which has all sorts of graphs. It's all types of housing from 2006 through 2016, so that information is available.
That's right, yeah. And I'm, I'm looking for staff to, suggesting they put that together. So the next time we have a conversation on rents, you know, we'll have what market has.
Well, it's all here.
It's all where?
The city housing staff does an annual rent survey in April of each year, and it's on our website. That's what you have.
Yeah, okay. All right, is there anything else?
Don't know. I made a motion. There was a second. I don't know if we need to make that a motion, or if it required a motion.
No, I think it should, because we should be of record what our, okay. Do we have a second on the motion?
I have a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any? No, okay. Okay, thank you. We are adjourned until we get a day off, and then we're, we're back at it on Thursday. Thank you. And thanks, thanks to the public speakers for coming up.